In meeting panelists for is yes, Anne's on me. I don't know if she's on the microphone though, but she's as a panel.
Yeah, um, mother is a co-host, make co-host. And then they have the ability.
Here we go.
Oh, is it already? Okay, never mind.
You're co-host now too, so whatever that means.
And I see Mrs. name. No.
Appreciate your face, right? Well, thank you for the setup, Captain Elton. Thank you all for your time. Really appreciate it. Always fun to come and share these updates with you. As Elton said, I'm trying to get into it here. You've seen a couple of these backboards at the safety meeting. These are the same numbers for those who didn't see them. These are numbers just from June. So every month we do an internal, interdepartmental stakeholders meeting. And so we give those updates. I want to let you know that going forward, we're going to send those every single month to council. So those presentations will be coming monthly for you. And then we would like to do like a quarter of that each year. Kind of hit the high level on numbers and then dive into some of this. Expect that to come. I'll just talk through this. So 101 site visits in the month of June. Sixty-six meaningful connections. We define meaningful connection is there's some sort of an anticipation or follow-up and that's going to be happening. It's more than just, hey, how you doing? My name's Brendan. Oh, I don't want any services and someone leaves us on the connection, but some sort of a plan that's in place in anticipation of a follow-up. Seventeen connected to services over the month, which is great. And then five in addition to that connected to shelter housing. What that equates to is about 10 or 11 people, 10 through the month of June. On average, that are working a plan. So if we get in time in the month of June, we got about 10 people working a plan, trying to get to next steps. And then this is since programs conception in January 2024. And even you, really mind-blowing, but also understandable numbers of why things have been so busy. So almost 2,200 site visits, those are unique and real site visits. Nine hundred nineteen meaningful connections. So about half the time when we go out to a site visit, we are making a meaningful connection with somebody. So that is what's great number. That's probably the highest number of any project or any answer for percentage. So good stuff.
Define meaningful connection.
What's that?
Define that.
Yeah, meaningful connection. So any anticipated follow-up with an individual. So we could have a great conversation. We swap information. There's some sort of a next step that's gonna happen. Not just, hey, you're on a site. You're not supposed to be on, but you're interested in services now if they leave. That would not be a need.
Okay.
And this doesn't mean one per individual. This could be, that could be three or four per individual.
Correct.
Yep.
Exactly.
And if you could, the next number two is that individuals. Sorry, keep talking.
That's okay. So connected to services, that's individuals. So between the 285 and the 91, that puts us at about 375 individuals connected to some type of service, 91 of those being shelter or housing in the last year and a half. So incredible. This one means a lot. One sometimes takes a lot of time. And that 375 over a year and a half is remarkable and I think that you should be proud of that. And then over the course of the program, again, about 10 or 11, on average, you're working. So, oh, this is, this is not the right presentation. This is the public works. Public safety reputation.
We have one in our packet.
We have in our packet if you wanna.
Yes.
I'll tell you what.
I can, well, I have the slide before.
Okay, yeah.
We want to take it off of.
Yeah, you wanna.
Yeah, this was the one for public safety. Okay. Do you have it? So I'll just walk through this.
Yeah, it should be.
This is the next one.
Topics and location. Topics and location.
Yeah, that's, that's the public safety.
Oh, it's in our agenda packet.
That's okay. You know, we could do is just.
We'll listen to you.
That's the one. I can share the packet. It's okay.
Sure. So we have it. We're not able to share it from here.
Okay.
I don't know. Secret techniques called going to the website, downloading the packet down.
It must've got updated later in the, today, because I downloaded it last night.
I had Barbara send this one over this morning.
Okay. So we'll go through it anyway. And then we're going to talk about outreach engagement outcomes. And so for that, I'm going to pass it. Trish, there's about four that we're going to highlight. And then we'll talk about challenges facing and.
So one of the things we touched on briefly at public safety, one of the females with some severe mental health and physical challenges, she's a combination of both. She'd been living outside for more than six years and we are so thrilled alongside the community that she's now been housed for several months and she is doing great. When, when she went into this housing, she was in a wheelchair and did not have the use of her hands any longer from different mental health and physical challenges being outside. It was a great pleasure to have Eric from Salvation Army ride along with me and go visit her and watch her walk across the courtyard and use her hands to eat. And she's got her glasses and is reading and has reconnected with family. And it is someone I wish sometimes we could share names because I think people would just say, oh, my gosh, but I'm someone well-known out here. To see her thriving and doing so well, it's worth it. It's worth all the challenges. And then we have another female, little bit older, who frequented the sidewalk, very intoxicated many times. Multiple substance use disorder challenges and mental health challenges. She's been housed for approximately four months now. And she's clean and sober and she is meeting with the doctor weekly. And I do take my own time to go see her at this point. Their house is a little warm, so I've been able to bring some popsicles. It's on my way home. So it's nice to be able to stop and just visit. Some of the mental health challenges are still there, but she's in an environment that they can keep her safe and also keep her in a position to know that she is in the best situation she can be in and get the help she needs. Some of the challenges there probably aren't resolvable in some way or another, but keeping her safe is, and she's happy and she's there voluntarily. And so I think that that's massive. We also have an individual who at the time of this, we shared, was pregnant and she has since had a healthy baby. And she has been living clean and sober now for 11 months. We were able to relocate her away from an area that was too familiar to her and she has her own apartment now and she is paying rent. And she is enjoying motherhood and she has engaged in multiple community supports. And it's just incredible to see that transformation from somebody that we ran into pregnant on park in sixth to now having her own apartment and meeting her at the park while she's having, you know, playtime with her child. So. And then lastly, a male who high acuity, mental health needs, stubborn system, substance use disorder, but mostly it's mostly, I would say exacerbated by substances, the mental health is, and this individual has been unhoused most of his adult life. And right now he is currently in permanent supportive housing. We were able to actually do collaboration with many agencies that we'll talk about later, but and he is living as appropriately independent as he possibly can at this point for the first time in his adult life. So I think that's massive.
So we have someone to talk about. So also want to talk about some challenges, things that we're running into, I think. You know, from a bird's eye, limited access to available resources due to barriers experienced by some of the individuals we're serving. I'm going to have Trish talk about two of those. One, one of those would be respite, one of those would be low barrier entry for family services.
So even with respite, I have spent hours today dealing with situations that fall into the category. It's for people who have wounds, open wounds, infection, who've had MRSA in the last six months. And people who maybe we don't need long-term solution for them. We need something while they have a PICC line or IV antibiotics or partial amputations of their feet on both sides that need someplace to heal. It's not appropriate to be in shelter for that. It's not appropriate to be outside, but we really lack someplace for them to be where they can exist and get the care that they need. And that's a challenge. We can't take somebody with a communicable disease that's infectious and contagious in the moment. We can't take them to shelter. That would be a public safety crisis, health crisis. And so we, some of that, the respite needs that we have, that's not long-term. We've actually had some great success with DSHS and Home and Community Services, getting people into long-term care. It's the short term. It's the getting healed while they're not quality or high acuity enough of a condition to keep in the hospital. They still need that ongoing care. They need wound care. They might need a wound back. They might need a certain antibiotic that they will not prescribe to someone who's living outside because of conditions or side effects or temperature control, things like that. And then the other one, some of the challenge we see is with low barrier entries for family services. We are encountering families with children that don't have places to go and there's nothing immediate for us to do in those instances where we encounter someone with a five-year-old. We don't have any place to take them. If we want to go to a family shelter, there's a waitlist. There's a background check. Background check folks from Monday through Friday. There's different barriers. So when we have someone come across a family in the evening, or if I come across a family and there's not a spot for them, there's literally no place that we have low barrier access to family services. And so I think that that's super important, that we recognize and continue to work towards something.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
A couple of questions. So I know that we have a rest center coming from, is it PTHS? And so I don't know what, what's our, and I forget what the timeframe is on that. I see they have ground, they've broken ground. Do we have a timeframe on when that? Anybody have any?
I don't know if it would serve this.
Yeah, that's what the rest.
Need or not.
The respite center, that's what it would do, right? You know what I'm talking about?
I do. We have very little information about it and there's, there's not been a definite announcement of what, what demographic or what the population that they would be able to serve.
I just, I was just told that that's what it would be for is for this specific kind of situation. We don't have it right now.
Right.
Like a day, like a, and like a daytime center and a respite center, of people just coming out of the hospital. And then, so the Salvation Army used to take families. They had a separate room. And so does that still happen? I know that's problematic because being a low barrier shelter, there's also like aid vendors and all kinds of people that come. And so is that still an option or not an option or not the best option?
There have been incredible partnerships there and whenever possible, we do utilize that as an option. It's not always an option. There's not always space available. And sometimes when it comes to that instance in the seven o'clock in the evening or on a Sunday afternoon.
They close at nine.
Right. So there's not always.
For intake at eight.
Right. So just the access to it some, sometimes can be a little bit more difficult, but they've been incredible partners with families.
Okay. But that is very limited. So that's like your one option. You probably have not counted.
Are seeing more families is why it's being brought up more now. We're seeing more families than we saw a year ago.
And then you're talking about limited access. Something that I am wondering if this is a limited access for you is the lack of a car park, you know, car parking facility for folks who are living in their cars.
That's on an.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that's. Can I mention one thing on the after-hours access to Salvation Army?
Sometimes you have partnerships and you're able to like call a favor in.
Yeah, and officers can get people in there. Sometimes when I encounter people when I'm out late at night. And if you run into somebody, you can get them into the shelter. Especially if it's somebody who's, you know, been reluctant to go to the shelter before because they want to be out doing whatever. Like, well, I can get you in. You know, we don't, that's not a barrier. I can get you in and then you've got. I've not, thankfully, I've never encountered a family at that, at that hour, but I would hope if I called Salvation Army after hours to get a family, they would make the work.
They've always done everything they can.
They're incredibly helpful.
Yeah, I know. I know. Okay, thank you. I segued you into.
I was gonna say, great segue. So the next one, second slide, the challenges would be frequently utilized services that are outside of the county that would be beneficial to have closer to Bremerton. One of those would be safe parking. One of those we talked about a low barrier medical detox. And before you get into those two, I just want to say transportation used to be a challenge, I think, as a kind of sorting through invoicing method and how that was in the WARTY. So connected with Melinda Monroe. We're gonna get that approved, get what we need and be able to utilize transportation. So thank you to the council. Thank you to you. Councilmember Mottler for follow-up and for information sharing. Appreciate that. It's a hard way to hurt. So thank you.
And let's thank Marwan too.
I was gonna say, because I think I shared with Melinda too, the contract that the county had with G2G2. So now the city has the same contract?
Absolutely. Yes, G2G2 and Marwan.
So.
So.
Yeah.
And then, so yeah, but let's park.
Safe parking, as you were just referring to, that is something that is very beneficial when it's run appropriately. And I do feel that it would benefit Bremerton in a very positive way to have access to that. Sometimes people with vehicles, that is the last shelter they have over their head. And it's not that they don't want to give up their car, that they don't want resources. That is their lifeline to other services. It's their lifeline to getting employment. It's so many things for people and having a program that's well-run and monitored. We're not saying just open up parking lots and you can just come park here, park wherever. It's actually programs that has a level of accountability, that compassion, and also the help with case management to move forward to your next step. Those programs are extremely special and it does alleviate what you could spend on a safe parking site, and I won't get into all the nitty-gritty of it, but it would alleviate what happens to impark, to law enforcement, to all of the other things that it, the resources that it affects when you have a lot of illegal parking or camping while parking. So that is something that we do access. We have made partnerships in neighboring counties who have allowed us to utilize their services there because they were able, they had capacity to. And then a low barrier medical detox. We have taken people as far as Aberdeen. We have taken them to Lacey. We have taken them to Seattle. We have utilized many things for a low barrier medical detox. And I think that that's extremely important, especially now with the fentanyl that we're dealing with. This is fentanyl that's not one dose of Narcan in your back. It's six or seven doses of Narcan and you're still going to re-overdose in 30 minutes if you don't get some healthcare. Those kinds of medical detoxes, we're not just putting someone in a subacute detox where they still risk terrible side effects, but also medical complications and/or death, respiratory distress, respiratory failure, things dehydration to the point of death. Those are real things that happen with, with coming off of a substance, especially substances today. And so a low barrier medical detox could, could be something that is very beneficial for not only this area, but the entire county.
Would you like questions as you do the presentation? Now you're probably almost done, or do you want to wait till?
That's okay. You can.
Anna, you had a question on our previous slide.
I did.
Jennifer has a slide, I think, on detox.
Okay. So the low barrier easy for family services, that's really a woman and four children were, was camping in Lillian Walker Park there, like right across from Julie Cooper. And I mean, she put them up for the night. But there was nowhere on a Sunday evening for this family to go. And the mother spoke mostly ma'am, the Guatemalan. So Captain Elton, would, would you have been able to find something for her had we called her, called you?
With four children, I think that would be a challenge. I, I would go straight to my, my go-to would be Salvation Army at that point, to find a new amount of resources and ability to connect people. But as they've said before, they have been pretty good about reaching outside of the county where we've been limited on the resources and connecting people with some of that, some of those things like you're talking about. I, I do need help.
Well, I guess I think that with the current immigration raids and with the, the general fact that women from Guatemala tend to speak less Spanish and much less English than the older men in the family. That this is something that's going to come up some more. Would you guys be able to translate? Is this too minutia for you guys?
I, I don't mind. I think they just, he's gonna let you know they have a translation service.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
For, for ma'am?
Yeah. It's, it's available, that's available to us now. We have an app and we have a bunch of. I don't want to say a bunch, for a small agency like ours, we have quite a few Spanish.
Great. And I have one thing on the respite, but I just wanted to say that we, the city council has gone down to Olympia every year for at least the last two years, if not three, to ask for a 50-bed medical detox facility in Kitsap County. So I hope maybe we can talk to our lobbyist before this session starts. And impress upon him. We would really like it. Yeah. Um, the, the last thing I wanted to say was that as far as respite goes, have you considered talking to the people at the can't remember which hospital it's associated with, the one on Kitsap, they have a trace relation. But I don't know. I doubt that they would want it used for four to eight days.
They do not do respite. They're not set up to do respite. I actually did also reach out to the residency program that exists out there to see if we could partner a portion of shelter or somebody who's willing to maybe do a small-scale in-home kind of thing and then have the residency program be able to come in and treat and, and go that that route. But as of, as of this moment, no, I don't have any solutions to that. I did get some more information and had a great conversation today with Ingles Wings, their coordinated care or respite facility. But as wonderful as that is, there's, you know, there's always going to be a barrier such as I can't send a husband and wife together and they're not willing to separate, even though we need some respite care. So I'm just looking a, a little bit broader into what would be suitable.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for respecting the dignity of people.
I was wondering if, not now, but if you could maybe like send us a link to, it seems like there's plenty of information that, or like examples that you've seen of like a good safe parking model. I know that for us, a barrier is that I think that our administration is looking for a community organization to partner with, right? Which I imagine is probably some of the most successful ones where a community organ partnered. But I'm, I'm curious if there's some where it's city managed and/or community org managed. So if you have a couple of examples that you could send to us, that'd be so wonderful. And then I, I think that one of the barriers, as we're talking about barriers to a, a low barrier medical detox facility is that there hasn't been good data on identified need. And so like for a long time there, I, I think I've mentioned before how I've talked to people that worked at these facilities, like, you know, KRC, et cetera. And maybe like at that moment, somebody is asking for medical detox and it's not, that data is not being captured because they just think that said, told, no, there's not, hang up. So is there, what data sets are you able to draw from to determine that you need, that we need a medical detox scenario?
So I, I participate in these types of services in multiple areas. One of the things I, I can say is that now because of what we're seeing as far as how withdrawal is so complicated with the newer drugs and with the the newer intensity of fentanyl and, and the combination of fentanyl and Valazine is that we have a big program through MDC and Tacoma that recently they have changed. They've used their opioid crisis lawsuit money and they are now expanding their detox to 10 days and using that money to pay for it because they the need has been so great for a real medical detox to prevent people from having negative side effects. And so that program will switch to 10 days here shortly. And then I do also, you know, I participate with a lot of the drug and alcohol analysis studies that come through SANSHA, which is the National Mental Health Organization and Addiction Medicine stuff. What we're seeing in the streets is a very different picture than what people could probably ever imagine when it comes to the withdrawal.
Yeah.
Process. And so our risks are different with different demographics of folks as well. So like now, if you are pregnant and using fentanyl, I would say more than 50% of my encounters, they actually don't take you, they will put you right on methadone and they prefer you to not come off of the fentanyl or methadone while you're pregnant. They want you to come off fentanyl. Let me rephrase that, but they want you to stay on methadone because the risk of going into preterm labor and having complications is so great. And so as we're seeing these drugs increase and the intensity of them increase, it is harder for people to physically handle coming off of them. And so that is where the medical detox. And then also the coordination with inpatient treatment centers. Most of them, like 99% of them in Washington State will not take a client unless they have gone through a medical detox when it comes to fentanyl or alcohol.
Wow.
And so we can't even get them in, which back in the day, it used to be you'd have to go for methamphetamines. And now Medicaid, for the most part, does not even pay for methamphetamines.
They don't want to handle the winter. With drugs, it's so dangerous.
And so they won't even pay for it because they don't believe that methamphetamine detox is needed to that level of medical oversight. But like our inpatient services will not take you if you have opiates or alcohol in your system without a medical detox.
Okay. So what about the relationship with, there's one happening, it's with the Subhamish tribe on that area. So tell me what you know about that. And do you know anything about their groundbreaking when they're set, I think, 2026?
I, it is a year out. I, I do know that. We, I have started communicating more with the tribe because they are starting to cover more of the services that will impact Bremerton positively. And so, yes, again, I'm somebody who I, I hope is not a business term for me, like until it's here, I'm gonna keep asking for it.
Yep.
And so that, it's a need and it's great. I don't, I mean, we've been out at three in the morning to coordinate with G2G2 to get someone to Lacey to get the first bed that opened for medical detox for a veteran. I'll do it 100 times.
Okay.
But it would be so much easier for people to access those services if it was here. And also that would give us the opportunity to utilize more of the local resources here instead of.
And now that we have this collaboration with transportation, we're able to get those people to Lacey, whereas in the past that was your barrier with transporting people out of the county, transporting people out of the service area that you're contracted for. Okay, great. Thank you for the information. You're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you. I love the anecdotal stories. I, as you were talking about trends and all of that and answer to specific questions, I'm gonna put our city attorney on the spot. Kylie, or maybe the rest of council knows. Aren't we paying, using our opioid lawsuit money for like or administrative organizational coordinational services?
They're doing an analysis.
Yes, which exactly what we've been talking to these folks about.
Doing the live analysis.
Right. Right, right. So I'm just wondering, when are we gonna get that actual data through that organization?
Salish Recovery.
Yeah, not just Common Street.
No, Salish Recovery, they're the ones that have the opioid money that we.
Why? Well, if we're getting an analysis of some sort, kind of through Common Street, but those are the folks that you're saying. I'm just, I'm wondering, okay, we're, we're paying this money to this organization that's doing all of these, this coordination and analysis.
Not a lot of money now.
Can we, can we, yeah, but we're paying for it. Can we get a report? That be appropriate, maybe?
Yeah, I think Anne's taking notes and back in, we're gonna have various presentations from various organizations.
And it's not all of us here too. It hasn't all come in. It's gonna come in over time.
Sure.
And it's not a lot, not like, not like Pierce County allotment. So it's not a, sorry.
We're gonna let you finish your presentation.
I just have one more slide, but it's a summary slide, so if there's any other questions.
I'll let you get to your summary and then we'll take more questions.
Summary. Multiple individuals connected to shelters and/or transitional housing. More and more people than ever are willing to actually engage with us and start working a plan to try to change the trajectory of their lives, which is fantastic. And that's not just a slide quote there. It's really more and more than ever had.
Truly.
And then other service providers continue to partner when appropriate toward working for positive outcomes, which is great. Because that wasn't always the case of especially of friends, like we have very.
We do, and I do want to call a little bit of an out very quickly. The Real Team, Frankie and April from the Real Team have been phenomenal. They have responded on the spot. They've responded with multiple situations calls. They've done everything. The partnership collaboration has been amazing. Bremerton Police Department continues to be exceptional. And also Rochelle and Honale, who are their navigators. But on Kitsap Rescue Mission has become an incredible partner. Carol, Jeff and Destiny are the case managers there. I am now there about once a week as needed because our people have been receiving referrals to go into the rescue mission. It's a process. I'm not gonna lie. Getting a background check, showing up for the appointment, getting your animal screened. It's a process, having that collaboration. And a huge shout out to Dice from the Heart Team because Dice has been helping us facilitate the people that are needing that from our end. Salvation Army continues to be a strong source of support. Eric and Dale and also the captain.